Welcome to everyone to the District One Democratic County Council Forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters Baltimore County and the Randalls Town NAACP. My name is Erica McDonald and I'm the co-president of the League of Women Voters of Baltimore County. We're pleased to present this opportunity for the voters of Baltimore County to meet the candidates and hear what they have to say about the important issues facing our county. The League and the NAACP are nonprofit, nonpartisan political organizations. Neither organization supports nor poses candidates for public office and both do not support political parties. The League's mission is to encourage informed and active participation in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. The NAACP seeks to ensure that African Americans as well as all citizens participate in our democracy as active and informed voters. A few housekeeping details before we begin. The forum this evening is a webinar, which means that the audience members can submit questions to the hosts in the chat but cannot post questions verbally or enable their video. During the forum, the candidates will respond to questions, but this is not a debate and time will not be provided for the candidates to rebut each other's questions. Questions will not be specific to any one candidate. Civility is expected and candidates who behave disrespectfully such as talking over other candidates will be warned and may be muted or removed from the forum. Please note, no unauthorized recordings of this forum are permitted as its content of the pro- or the forum, the recording is the content of the property of the League of Women Voters of Baltimore County and the Randalls Town NAACP and may not be used without permission. A recording will be available after the forum posted on the League's website tomorrow and then provided to the candidates to share the link as well. And with that, we are ready to begin our forum. Our timekeeper this evening will be Diane Ashenbrenner. Our question facilitator is Nora Miller-Smith and our moderator tonight is Nielsen Andrews, who serves on the board of the League of Women Voters of Baltimore County. And with that, let me just bring Nielsen up before you start, just a second. All right, I'll hand it over to you, Nielsen.
The Baltimore County Council is the elected legislative body of the, and it is vested with all lawmaking power granted to the county charter and by the General Assembly in Maryland. Tonight, we will hear from the Democratic candidates for County Council in District One, Paul Dungara, Danielle Singley, and Pat Young. The candidates will make a two-minute opening statement as well as a two-minute closing statement after the question and answer period. The order of the opening statements have been determined by alphabetical order of their last name. The closing statements will be in the reverse order from the opening statements. The timekeeper will give a 30-second verbal warning and announce when the allotted time is up. After the opening statements, each of them will have an opportunity to respond to questions. Candidates will not be allowed to give rebuttals. We will begin with questions developed by the League of Women Voters and the Randalls Town NAACP, followed by questions from the audience. We invite you to submit questions via the chat where they will be collected, embedded, and passed to the moderator. Our screener will review questions for repetition and choose variety. We may not have time to address all questions submitted by the audience. Candidates will have two minutes to respond to the question and time limits will be strictly enforced. The timekeeper will alert the speaker when they have 30 seconds left and when time is up, at which time the speaker must stop speaking within 10 seconds. Our goal is to end the forum at 8:00 PM and appreciate everyone's help in achieving this goal. We will now have a two-minute opening statement from each of the candidates. And Mr. Dungara will go first, then Ms. Singley, and then Mr. Young.
Great, thank you so much to the NAACP and the League of Women Voters for having all of us here this evening. A little bit about myself, my wife Rebecca and I have lived here for about 30 years. We've raised three kids. My whole family is a product of our public school system. Four of us, myself included, are UMBC retrievers. I've owned a special events firm in the area. I've helped grow our economy. As one of our project managers, my job was always to convene stakeholders, assess their needs, innovate, while I would keep promises that would bring their dreams to life. In addition, I have a long history of giving back to the community. I fought things like hunger, homelessness, domestic violence, and human trafficking, while I supported things like the arts, our youth, hospice, environmental, and social justice. But most of all, most important to this race, I'm a land use activist concerned about how and why we develop and how suburban sprawl has been fueled by a well-documented pay-to-play system that's left us poor with neglected older communities that are burdened with a tidal wave of infrastructure liabilities and a damaged environment. In these regards, I've worked with many communities all over the district to promote responsible land use. And indeed, I was actually the citizen activist that caught our largest local developer funneling money illegally to our current councilperson. I forced an indictment and helped pass meaningful campaign finance reform. In this race, I'm refusing developer funds because, you know, trust is required to move smart growth redevelopment forward.
30 seconds.
Redevelopment is very powerful. It means safer streets for a variety of reasons. It means better schools and roads because we'll be building off of previous investments to create a sustainable tax base and it creates environmental protections for, again, a variety of reasons. And tonight, I'm looking forward to sharing some of my ideas about how we want to do this, what we've been talking to people as we've been door knocking for about 10 months now across District One. So, thank you.
Ms. Singley, you are, great, good. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you Randalls Town NAACP and the League of Women Voters for having us all here. I'm very excited to be here. My name is Danielle Singley and I'm running for Baltimore County Council in District One, which includes areas of Windsor Mill, Woodlawn, Security Square Mall, Catonsville, Arbutus, Lansdowne, and Baltimore Highlands. And I am truly excited about this opportunity. I think it is actually an unprecedented race being that we, for the first time, have had so many people of color running because it is, it is our time. You know, we have, it has proven that the community wants to make sure that we have a diverse council moving forward as we kind of go through these, these challenging periods where our civil rights and so forth have been so boldly challenged. A little bit about me, I'm a sixth-generation Baltimore County resident and a descendant of the historic African-American community of East Towson and Ponty Grove, which is up in Reisterstown. I was raised in Woodmore, 201207, and I currently reside in Westview Park with my family. I am a proud graduate of both parochial and public schools, Milford Mill Academy to be exact, in terms of my high school, and I graduated from the University of Maryland. I am wholeheartedly civic engaged, I believe in civic engagement and public service, volunteerism, et cetera. I am a member of the NAACP Executive Board. I serve in my local union for Baltimore County Government. I also have worked in various services for many, many years. And in addition to that, I'm an environmental activist as well. I'm running because I believe wholeheartedly in representation. I believe in proactive conscientious leadership and I think that it's important that our leaders reflect the ideas, values, and experiences of our Baltimore County communities. And I look forward to being your councilwoman. I hope to earn your vote tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Young?
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. Thanks to the League of Women Voters and the NAACP for hosting this. There have been a number of challenges with COVID and trying to make sure that we're, one, getting the word out and engaging with voters. So, thank you for taking the time to invite us and talk about our platform. So, I'm currently the delegate in District 44B, one of two. In 2014, I won a seat in a brand-new district in southwest side of Baltimore County. And in 2018, after winning reelection, I was elected by my peers to be the chair of the Baltimore County delegation down in Annapolis. But before all that, I was growing up and living on the southwest side of Baltimore County, born and raised in Woodbridge Valley. And when I was going to school here, went to local schools for elementary through middle school, then ended up going to Mount St. Joe for High School, then enlisted in the United States Marine Corps in 2001, right after graduating. My experience in the military, I joined during peacetime and unfortunately, the next four years of my time ended up all being combat-related. I served two combat tours in Iraq, including a humanitarian mission in Liberia. And, well, I ended up deciding to come home and go to school on the GI Bill over Towson University. I'd seen enough over the last four years and accomplished what I believed I wanted to accomplish, wanted to come back and give back to my community. When I was a child and growing up on the southwest side, playing local sports, engaging with my church, being in the Boy Scouts, getting a chance to know, this is where I've grown up and this is where, the place that I know and I care about really is my home. And when I ran for office in 2014, I had the opportunity to give back and I see that opportunity again with the council seat and the current councilman not running for reelection, taking what I've learned from the legislature and what I've learned working with the budget and making sure that the resources that we have available to us are being brought back to our district and making sure that we're having everybody involved in the conversation related to where we want our district to be in four, eight, 12 years. Thank you.
Now, we will move to the question and answer period. And Ms. Singley, Terry, you'll go first. And the first question is, how do your skills and experience prepare you for duties on the county council?
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. So, that, that question is a wonderful question because I've had a lot of different experiences that I think would, would qualify me and really set me apart from, you know, my opponents in terms of serving on the county council. I currently serve in Baltimore County Government. I'm a program manager. I have developed programs for Baltimore County Government and served directly with vulnerable, you know, serving vulnerable populations and working across various different local agencies internally with Department of Health and Human Services, Social Services, the police and fire, to externally, I'm working with, you know, hospitals and caseworkers and social workers, nurses in the schools. And what that experience has allowed in me is the ability to see firsthand how employees work, what the issues are systemically internally, where the gaps are. I've seen exactly, and I've been able to work through some of those gaps and, and see how, what happens when money is, is given to, to local government and how, you know, program managers and so forth have to make use of that money in real time. In addition to that, I have worked, you know, and volunteered externally with the Randalls Town NAACP, chairing the Task Force to Revitalize Security Square Mall. And what that has also allowed in me to do is to see things and of course advocate from the community side and seeing how the community gets responded to from the perspective of the government to the community and having the ability to see, ask the questions and, 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 and see systemically our zoning issues and, and, and so forth. In addition to that, you know, I have forged programs and partnerships dealing with food insecurity during COVID-19. We were developing programs and ensuring older adults in the community were, you know, served. And my, my experience has really allowed in me a holistic, well-rounded experience that is both in public service and also volunteerism.
Mr. Young?
So, I would say that over the last, even before the last eight years, being elected to the legislature, growing up on the southwest side, getting an idea of, one, where we are as a community, where we'd like to be, and even knowing where, in my mind, thought we would be, you know, as a kid, and then seeing where we are now, gives me a perspective that spans decades and multitudes of experience in different communities. One, representing 44B and also volunteerism and staying engaged with the local community and different organizations around Baltimore County on southwest side. I would say that, one, serving in the military has prepared me in the sense that, especially now, even serving in the legislature, project management, having a goal, setting a goal, pulling the right people together to achieve that goal and knowing that you're, once you've set a plan in place, it's not always going to go the way that you want, but working towards the end goal, it doesn't necessarily matter if everything runs smoothly. It's about getting to that end state. And I'd say that serving in the legislature over the last eight years, it's given me the experience to, one, know where to pull people together. There's such a diverse set of issues. I mean, the, the great thing about being in the legislature is it's not just one thing. You have an opportunity to have an impact on multiple things. And being able to build coalitions, identify problems, and find resources to get, achieve, and fix, fix problems has been one thing that I've been very successful at and look forward to doing as a councilman. Thank you.
Mr. Dungara?
A great, great question. So, you know, other than being self-employed for 30 years and all the skillsets that come along with that and there are numerous skillsets, you know, I have to say that my land use activism has really prepared me to deal with the major power of the office, which is to make land use decisions in a responsible and transparent way for the citizens of Baltimore County. Whether I am reading books about smart growth development or participating in webinars from organizations like the Congress of New Urbanism or Strong Tounds, other than Itsy Potoka, who I see is in the, the meeting this evening, I didn't think we've ever had a councilperson that's going to come to council as prepared to talk about issues, about how to grow a sustainable tax base, how to use land use, and how to create a more sustainable built environment. I'm very proud of that. I'm very proud that I have worked with communities from Windsor Mill all the way down to Baltimore Highlands to promote responsible land use. I know their frustration. I know that they feel as though that there's an abusive pay-to-play system, mostly because there is. And I'm prepared to deal with that regarding other issues like education. As a parent with three children that went through the public school system, as someone who before he started his business was a teacher and did his student teaching in a local middle school, I'm prepared to talk about the educational issues that face Baltimore County, which are sizable and numerous. And I think my project management skills also, again, I have a 30-year history of keeping promises to families and I look forward to doing it to my final family, the collective communities of District One.
The next question, what are your priorities for the Baltimore County budget? Given the county received increased funding from local, state, and federal sources, what would be your spending priorities? Are there particular areas in the county that you see as a priority for these funds? And Mr. Young, you are going first.
Sure. So, as a member of the Appropriations Committee for the last eight years in Annapolis, I've had the opportunity, one, to understand and work through the state budget process and know how it impacts Baltimore County and our local budget. I think that, and I've said this in different forums before too, there's a reason why the governor starts his budget process in the fall. We receive it in the winter when the session starts and then the county releases their budget towards the end of the legislative session, right after it ends, because they're looking for what is going to be coming from the state to supplement their projects and what supports they're going to receive from the state. Using and knowing how that process works, I think is imperative, one, recognizing what our needs are, having a plan to set things outward. You're not always going to have the funds available to start a project or to finish a project right away, being able to identify years out how you get from point A to point B, whether the money is there, or being able to allocate and know where you can find resources to get something done. I would say that, one, it's been a pleasure serving in legislature, supporting Schools for a Future, supporting the Blueprint for Maryland's Future, and playing a role in the education funding that we received over the last few years. And being able to play a role in all of the federal funds that came from DC related to the Recovery Act from both administrations and playing a role in what gets allocated to our local jurisdiction.
30 seconds.
Focusing, focusing on education, focusing on using the resources that have been presented to us and have been allocated to the, at the local level and putting them into work to, one, address, one, what I see is, one, making sure that District One is receiving all the school funding and construction funding that it, one, that it needs, and, two, that is going to be allocated to it. And, two, being able to use the recovery funds, one, support recovery efforts at the local level, focus them on state funding and using them related to our cybersecurity posture for the local, our local jurisdiction of Baltimore County, making sure our schools are safe and protected. Thank you.
Mr. Dungara?
So, when we're talking about the budget, you know, it's very important for everybody to understand that, you know, if we look at just the capital budget, okay, we are going to be asked as taxpayer, taxpayers come November to approve about $355 million worth of general obligation bonds because for 60 years, we've been building a tax base that doesn't pay for itself, that incurs infrastructure liabilities that are, that are greater than the money that comes in. So, I mean, you know, addressing that for me is a top priority because it fuels not only this cycle or the next five years, but the future of, of Baltimore County forever. It's so important. So, we need to start looking at investing in things like trying to do a pre-approved design processes to spur what's called incremental development. We have to start analyzing kind of what are our most valuable parts of our tax base and then investing in those communities so that we lift their confidence. We have a lot of communities whose confidence are, are struggling. We have to invest in bikeability and walkability. There's so much effort that's put into mass transit, but yet we are neglecting the conversation about building places that transit can thrive in. These are all very, very important things. You know, when we look at the budget, about 60% of our capital budget is just going to repair our sewer lines. And that's a huge amount. The schools account for about another 30% of that. That only leaves about 10% for road construction and parks and all of the amenities to contribute to our quality of life. Even with that huge amount being spent on the sewer lines, we're at a deficit of $51 million that the planning board had recommended. So, we really need to start looking at this issue. I, you know, I've educated the community a lot about this. I've talked to a lot of voters about it and we need to start building a more productive tax base.
Ms. Singley?
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. My top three priorities, of course, are the schools. And let me just preface this, if we're talking strictly county dollars, because we do get funds from various different sources, state, federal government as well, strictly county, schools, of course, would be my main priority, economic development and revitalization, and then public safety and a reimagined public safety model. Notice I did not say just police. I would like to include the health department in there because we have learned after COVID-19 how important our public health nurses are and how important they need to be included in that public safety model because they were the ones saving lives during this entire COVID-19 pandemic. So, I would include those nurses, those public health nurses into that model and make sure we are investing more into our public safety model, the fire department and so forth, because I do think if we invest in a holistic public safety approach, it will take the pressure off of the police and it will make our communities a lot safer. In terms of economic development and revitalization, the mall is an example of what happens when you don't invest in that. And also revitalization is going to include environmental sustainability because, again, it's a holistic approach here. The silo mentality has to end and we really do need to look at things holistically. You know, our, our communities are crumbling. You know, it's clear that whatever is happening with our money is not always reaching the communities. I left the schools for last because I think the schools right now, we're seeing a lot happening in the media in terms of our schools and of course, we need more investment. However, what I would like to say is that I think the PT, one of the things that I don't hear enough in the discussion is the importance of investing in our PTAs as well. Our PTAs really are, in my opinion, going to be, in addition to the teachers, it's a very important piece of this puzzle. Most of your strong schools have very strong PTAs as well. And that also takes the pressure off of your teachers and your principals so they can focus on teaching and the support and collaboration of parents. And a lot of our lower-income schools and so forth don't really have strong PTAs. So, if we can figure out a way we can really support those PTAs, provide them with more money, maybe get some volunteer coordination going, I think our schools would be in a lot better place.
While we're talking about educational issues, let's stick with that for a minute. And I'd like to ask you, what do you see as the major educational issues in the county? What, how would you use your budgetary influence on the county budget to address these issues? Oh, it helps if I tell you who's going first, right? Mr. Dungara, you go first.
So, you know, about 50, over 50% of the operating budget goes to education. And so, this question is just so incredibly important. You know, I, I do think that we need to get back to more of a back-to-basics approach, that we need to use evident-based, you know, evidence-based systems to make sure that we're doing things that work. There's a lot of experimentation in the school system. We saw from 2015 to 2019, this is pre-pandemic, we saw, you know, a reduction of student performance. That's not okay. So, we need to make sure that we invest in what works in the school system, which we know is decreasing classroom size, investing in wraparound services to try to help turn disruptive students into attentive, you know, learners. We certainly need to address the behavior issues. And again, the wraparound services are going to be part of that. We need to invest in the teachers and our educational staff, which are being drawn to other counties that are paying higher salaries, again, in part because their suburban expansion is younger than ours and we're paying more for our infrastructure costs than they, than they do. And we really need to look into that. Our school buildings are often a problem.
30 seconds.
Start innovating. I mean, we really need to start innovating. I liked what Danielle said about using the, the community and our PTAs to get their investment in things. And I also think that we need to try to start finding ways where we can kind of create more of a, of a mixed income community approach to development because right now, you know, we have certain parts of our school districts that have such a high density of poverty, it really harms those students' ability to learn. And I think by addressing that, that'll help the school systems quite a bit.
Mr. Young?
So, thank you. I want to point out then, and what I'm proud to say it too, the, a lot of the innovation, a lot of the work that we're going to see come out of our school system is going to be directly related to Blueprint, Maryland's Future that we just passed in the Maryland General Assembly, providing unprecedented funding, not to the, our school buildings, but to the way in which we educate our kids. And in terms of the question of, what do I think some of the biggest challenges are? What do I see facing our schools and our students? One, preparing our kids so when they graduate from high school, that they're ready for the economy that they're going into. Folks, engaging with people around the community from, you know, down south in Baltimore Highlands all the way up to Woodlawn, it's concern about what opportunities are available for their kids that were available to them when they had graduated. And while it takes a little bit more planning, those opportunities are still there, but are we strategically preparing our kids to take advantage of them? I mean, we talked about unemployment rates, not here, but generally people talk about unemployment rates, and we have enough open positions across the entire state to employ every single Marylander that's unemployed, but we don't have a workforce that's prepared or qualified to fill all of those positions. And part of the reason and part of the thought process behind the blueprint was looking at states, multiple states, and looking internationally, what do they do right? And what are their results? How can we mimic that here in Maryland? And part of it is about paying teachers the right amount, increasing their pay.
30 seconds.
When you talk about violence and talk about problems in schools, it's about making sure that they're supported with the appropriate amount of staff. Staffing issues across the board, not just in schools, are an issue. And it's not about people not wanting to do the work, it's about not having the appropriate compensation that they would want to take a job and get paid less to do that sort of work. So, one, I think that looking at how we're educating our kids, making sure that the focus is on, on making sure they're prepared for the economy of the future. So, when they graduate, they're ready to take a job and, and focusing on their success and their opportunities, that they're not left behind.
I'm going to ask a question that's come in from the audience and then we'll go back to some of the other questions.
Danielle did an answer that, that you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I had such a good answer too. Okay, thank you. So, um, so to answer your question, the two major, the, 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 stop laughing, Paul, the two most important issues in my opinion, inequity and bureaucracy, those are the two major issues in, in the school system. Inequity being that, you know, resources, the perspective of our most vulnerable students really are largely ignored. really are largely ignored. And there's just a disconnect in terms of how to best prepare students for a well-rounded education. I'm going to give you an example of what I mean. COVID-19 happened. A lot of students regressed as a result of, you know, not being able to go to school and so forth. And for the first time, I think people were seeing what a lot of parents and children with special education have been going through for the longest time, but nobody seemed to care when it was affecting children who were in special education, black and brown families who constantly are dealing with school regression and so forth. It was only an issue when it was affecting more affluent white communities. And that's an example of inequity. And our school system needs to do a better job of caring about issues when it affects all of our children and not just certain communities. The second thing about, I think, the issue that affects our communities the most in the school system is bureaucracy. You're seeing it right now playing out. It's a result of, you know, the, 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 the issue with the superintendent. We have too many people at the Board of Education, which keeps the power and control there. And the schools really do need to have more control over what happens in their schools.
Thirty seconds.
Schools are reflective of communities. Principals need to be able to be the administrator. The teachers need to be able to teach. Unfortunately, we have a lot of interference happening from the Towson, you know, the, the administrative level. And I think that that does harm communities and and performance. So so those are the two issues, equity, inequities rather, and in bureaucracy, top-heavy bureaucracy.
Thank you. Now, we will go to a question. It's sort of a combined question from the audience. Can each of you delineate how you are funding your campaign and how you will advocate for the community and not special interests? And the first person to go is Danielle. It's Ms. Singley.
Sure. So you're asking first about campaign finance. So I don't get a lot of funding from developers. Okay, I don't know any developers. I don't have a lot of affluent friends, so I'm not getting a lot of funding. And quite frankly, people laugh because my focus is not fundraising at all. I tell people all the time, I want your vote, not your money. We're living in unprecedented times. People don't have a lot of money. And a lot of people that I know are, I mean, if they have extra money, they're buying food for their children, not trying to fund my campaign. In terms of special interests, how I would answer that is it depends on how you define special interests. Because some people think that I'm a walking special interest by nature of my demographics, right? But at the same time, I think that if you're asking about specific nonprofit agencies and so forth like that that might, you know, endorse certain candidates, again, I am always about the people. I'm not seeking out endorsements. I'm not seeking out working with special interest groups per se by nature of this, this campaign. I've literally been showing up for forums. I've been talking directly with people. You know, that's my focus. You know, that's always going to be my focus, community development. I'm working directly with the community. So so I hope that answers your question. I'm, I'm, I'm not in the know with developers. So that should, that should give you enough, you know, self-doubt right there, well, at least alleviate self-doubt in terms of how I would deal with special interests and developers. I don't know any.
Mr. Young?
Sure. And thanks for the question. So I have been run the gambit here because I am an eight-year incumbent Maryland General Assembly. And I remember in 2014 being the underdog and not associated with any organization and running a shoestring budget and then failing. I did the same in 2018 for reelection. Once announcing that I was going to run for county council, folks that I'd never heard from before reaching out and wanting to support and not because of any interaction I've had with them, but because of the reputation I've built over the last eight years working with everyone, being someone that solves problems, that brings people together, take on issues that, not just small ones, but big ones, and engaging with everybody to find a equitable and fair answer, depending on what, whatever that particular issue is. I think, one, being elected as the chair of the Baltimore County delegation from my peers and building a reputation of knowing that you're not, you're only here for one reason. And that's because the voters have elected you and the citizens want you to represent them and serve them. That's number one. And that's where I've been since I started this, started this in 2014. That's where I continue to be. Growing up in this area, there's nobody from outside of here that's going to dictate where we move forward or how we move forward. It's always going to be community-focused and community-based. I will say that I take funds from and contribute.
Thirty seconds.
I'm willing to provide it mainly because I have a reputation and I have a history of doing the right thing regardless of who's contributing to a campaign. Well, I mean, you can, I encourage anyone to go ahead and take a look at my voting record as well. They haven't always been easy choices or easy, easy votes or easy decisions to make. But at the end of the day, making the right decision regardless of who's supporting your campaign or supporting you. At the end of the day, it's what do these voters want, what do constituents want? And providing a forum for them to participate. I think that's also what's been missing. A clear way for folks to participate in the process they feel left out of. And I can commit to providing that and continuing that work.
Mr. Dungara?
So history has shown us that when a county council candidate takes large amount of money from developers, the way that Delegate Young is taking it, that they, they receive preferential treatment. And this is well documented and it's part of the county's history. It's the whole reason why I'm refusing developer funds, you know, to build the sustainable tax base. We will need new development and the public deserves to have someone that they can trust, that they understand that these decisions are being made because of sound planning principles and not developer funds. In addition, we see counterproductive decisions being made with things like the Royal Farms store going in on Route 40. And it's very disert, you know, I'm very concerned when I see $1,000 from Royal Farms going to Delegate Young. We need to make sure that we have planning principles steering the ship. Regarding me, 100% of my funds come from concerned citizens and family. I have the largest number of in-district donations of anybody in this race. And it's incredibly important that everybody in this district understands that the next election cycle, we have public financing of campaigns, meaning that this is our chance to elect someone and then have the people to protect them instead of having developers
Thirty seconds.
their candidate to put them in office and then continue to raise the money. And I would also like to say Delegate Young made a comment.
Mr. Dungara, please stop.
Okay. It's very important to note that land use attorneys raise money for the candidates that they believe will be favorable. And that's why the development money flows to certain candidates, because the choice is being made for us and not by us.
The next question, how would you, how would you plan to address violent and crime in the county? And now I've sort of lost track. Mr. Young, you go first.
Sure. One, I'll talk a little bit about what we've done at the state level and talk about what we experience at the local level. I'll say that there's been talking, I know that you didn't bring this up, but defunding the police. And I'll just mention that Baltimore County has provided record funding to our officers and our first responders this year and previous year. And it doesn't seem to be any change to that in terms of supporting the action, supporting the officers, supporting the, our core group of first responders that are keeping our community safe. What we've done at the state level is try and create and produce more public trust in folks that, one, we expect and, and, one, at the end of the day, deserve it because of the work that they do. But making sure that, one, we are allowing police do their job and be police officers and not having them bogged down with doing extra work, things that get away from keeping communities safe and keeping people safe and stopping violent crime and folk and taking their time away from it to be a social worker, to do jobs that they weren't necessarily intended to. But we expect all things from officers. And I've not heard one complaint because they will do what's necessary to get the job done, whether it's a call that requires somebody to be arrested but not necessarily held because there's a mental health issue, whether it requires, you know, keeping other folks safe by using the tools that they have available to do so. But we've seen models work in other
Thirty seconds.
We've seen the statistics show that if you're providing the resources available to treat a call from the public with the appropriate resource to address that issue, it saves our police officers' time and it saves the county money and allows them to continue to keep folks safe by doing the job that we expect them to do and letting social workers, mental health experts, to do the work that they can do to make sure that folks, one, in an engagement with first responders, that they're safe, that they're being addressed. And that it's not just about locking people up. It's about getting treatment if necessary and assistance to be a productive person and productive member of society. Thanks.
Mr. Dungara?
So, you know, I really believe that in order to fight, you know, crime, that we have to look at the root causes of crime. And part of the root causes of crime has come from how we have chosen to kind of develop as a county, always looking for the new shiny places, growing outward. What happens when that, when we do that, our older communities get neglected and we start having what's referred to often as a loss of community confidence. And we start seeing people perhaps move out, more homes being rented. The confidence start, the decrease starts to, you know, to accelerate faster and faster. And then that, that community kind of spirals into a state of disrepair. And that's something that we're seeing in a lot of District One. We're certainly seeing that down in the, in the, in the deep south. We're certainly seeing that in parts of Arbutus. And, you know, for me, part of the councilperson's job really should be to find ways to go, or not find ways, but to go into these communities to observe them with humility and love in their heart and do things to try to improve that community's confidence. Because a confident community really is necessary to combat crime because a community that's lacking confidence is a community in which crime really thrives. Again, part of this also is about building that sustainable tax base so that you can sustain
Thirty seconds.
the expanded social services to get at the root causes of crime, which is in part poverty, to start requiring developers to have set aside units for affordable uses, affordable housing across a spectrum of income levels so that we can start to deconstruct some of the high-density projects that we have in District One. And I think, again, addressing the root cause of crime, namely poverty, would be our best tool to reduce violent crime.
Ms. Singley?
So obviously, those who are committing crimes and are a danger, an immediate danger to others, need to be arrested. I mean, we're not to the point yet where we're having people walking around with, you know, machine guns like I saw on the news a couple of weeks ago, people shooting in the streets. But, you know, that could be around the corner if we don't start fixing some of these issues happening now in our, in our, in our communities. I do definitely think that a reimagined public safety model is very important. An expanded public safety model that does not continue to put the pressure on the police is the way of the future. I think that when we overutilize the police, what it does is it, you know, it puts the police in an impossible state. It puts the community against the police and so forth. The police are not designed to, to be social workers. That's not their area of expertise. Their area of expertise is not to really be in the school system either. You know, they, they're carrying guns. We have children in the school system. You know, we are reaping what we sow, I feel. And, you know, and that might be a very harsh thing to say, but I believe that when you sow, you're going to reap what you sow. So we need to start reaping more into other agencies as well. We need to make sure that our, you know, our social workers, our social services and health have the resources that they need to combat and kind of help with some of the mental health issues that we're seeing in our communities, that our schools have the resources that they need, that, that our recs and parks facilities are able to provide more and be more involved with cultivating opportunities for children, teenagers in particular, because there are not enough things to do for teenagers in Baltimore County. There are not enough jobs in Baltimore County. And quite frankly, the laws at the state level have made it impossible for people to want to hire teenagers, which is a problem. Because if teenagers don't have work, you're going to see them on the, on the streets trying to use squeegees to clean off cars, which then introduces them possibly to the police system because people call the police on squeegee children or children using squeegees. So that's an example of what I mean. You have to kind of reimagine this and, and look at this from a holistic perspective.
All right. What, what do you see as the most important aspects in the, in the redevelopment of Security Mall and the Woodlawn area? And first goes Mr. Dungara.
So I think it's really important, you know, I'm, I'm, I've been disappointed that the county has not put a moratorium on any, you know, on all building there until we come up with a master plan that's binding. You know, my team and I have been looking at the kind of value per acre of that mall. The mall is only producing about $600,000 of tax base per acre, which is incredibly low considering the infrastructure of Security Boulevard that it sits upon. As a point of reference, there's townhouse communities right down the street that are producing $2.6 million per acre. So, you know, this is an opportunity to kind of reimagine Security Square Mall, which is our largest, most glaring example of an ailing commercial corridor. But it's not the only one. And we need to educate the community and involve the community about imagining what this can become. Most planners, indeed, our master plan right now is targeted Security Square Mall as a T5 intersect zone for kind of a mixed-use development. But when that, if that can be brought to fruition, we really need to make sure that the surrounding community, that the bicycle and pedestrian connections are made so that they can get up there. We have to be really leery of the places that are touted as where you can live, work and play.
Thirty seconds.
Oftentimes, these places are created and you can go there only if you can afford to live, work and play there. It's going to be very important to make sure that it's a mixed-income community. And it's also important for us to understand that this is not the main only redevelopment issue in the county or in the District One. We certainly have downtown Woodlawn. We have downtown Arbutus. You have a light rail station down in Baltimore Highlands. All of them requiring the same thoughtful attention while we're being intentional with our strategies, while we align our resources.
Ms. Singley?
Baltimore County has decidedly taken a very passive approach on Security Square Mall. For whatever reason, it's based upon relationships, it's based upon, you know, I guess them trying to cater towards who's going to fund their campaigns. I don't know what it is. But there are plenty of laws on the books already that could be utilized to definitely deal with Security Square Mall. I mean, the, you know, permits, approvals and inspections is clearly not doing enough. They could be ticketing, you know, all the different code enforcement violations at that mall every day and could actually be increasing the revenue for Baltimore County. Environmental protection and sustainability could be out there, you know, ticketing and, and, and completely, you know, deal with the rad issue internally, externally and everything. The health department, which is right in the mall, could be, could be dealing with, you know, the, the dumping in the trash. I'm going to go right back to the EPS, the same thing. They could be, the county could be doing so much for it, but they are not. There are laws on the books. We have told them what those laws are. They are not. My issue with Security Square Mall, which is actually one of the main reasons I'm running, is because I want to make sure it gets done. I want to make sure, I want transparency. I want to make sure that whatever we had planned last summer with the community, our elected officials and so forth, actually happens and that we are, that the community knows exactly what's happening, that the moratorium does occur, that we actually see a revitalized, reimagined Security Square Mall in greater Woodlawn community. Because 20 years is far too long
Thirty seconds.
getting that way. And it should not have taken people, you know, contacting all these different state officials and, and writing letters. And it should not have taken. That's a failure of our system. And, and so I'm expecting in this next election for something to happen with that mall. It is one of the sole reasons that I'm running, one of the main reasons that I'm running, I should say. Because I'm very passionate about that mall and I want to make sure our community thrives. It's such a great opportunity.
Mr. Young?
Thank you. So I wanted to point out and when I share my, the other candidates' concern for security. Growing up right in Woodbridge Valley, going to Security Mall was my stomping ground. That was where I had my favorite, you're spending more time in that theater than I think my parents would like. in that theater than I think my parents would like. Seeing what's, where it's come to, and I think, one, being involved in government, and some of the things that Ms. Singley had mentioned too, you're pointing out the, the inactive role that the county has played historically related to development. And going back to what Paul was saying too, oftentimes it's left to the property owner, the developer, to make the decision in terms of what they put in without necessarily a thought of 10, 15 years from now, how it plays into the greater community. I'll say that from a legislative standpoint, Senator Sidnor represents District 44, put in legislation that we passed to create a West Side redevelopment organization that it enables the council to stand it up. I'm excited, one, playing a role in getting that passed with legislature, as the councilman, to work with my colleagues to actually create this new redevelopment organization that is unprecedented for Baltimore County, because it didn't exist before. You see examples in Baltimore City and other areas where there's more of a redevelopment focus, but up to this point, it really has been, as has been discussed, property owner owns a property, allowing them within the law to do certain things with it without
Thirty seconds.
And then once you have this property, like Security Mall, allowing it to sit there because you just leave it to the property owner to make a decision. And while we look at it and say like, there's an opportunity here. It's the size of downtown Annapolis, the entire property. You can overlay the map and it's that large. That's a huge opportunity for Baltimore County, for the communities that surround it. Not just for doing what's right, but also an economic opportunity for that region and that neighborhood. We did receive $10 million from the state, and the county's putting in $10 million to help that redevelopment effort. And look forward to playing a role in the council to make it, make it real and have a, an end state that I believe everybody would be proud of.
The next question is, what are your views on expanding the number of Baltimore County Council districts to serve the continuing growth of Baltimore County's diverse population? And Ms. Singley, you can go first.
I support it and I collect signatures for it whenever I have the opportunity to do so. I was just doing it this past weekend. I put, I was just on a call to do another event in a couple of weeks. I, I don't need the two minutes.
Mr. Dungara?
So when there were the lawsuits, you know, pending to try to do redistricting to show, you know, to encourage more minority representation on, on the council, I'm on the record saying that this was the solution that, that we do need to pursue. The county has grown, ooh, leaps and bounds since the original days of the charter of about 350,000 people with seven districts. We still have seven districts and we have over 800,000 people. The councilperson has about 170,000 constituents in a geographic area that is very, very broad. I think that the, the citizens of Baltimore County deserve to have a little bit more focused attention. The needs are very great all over District One. And I certainly agree that, you know, by creating these four new districts, that it will also increase minority representation on the council, which is certainly a good thing, both for women representation and then people of color as well. It also would mean that it shrinks the size of your constituents, which means it would be more affordable to run for office. And I can tell you, somebody that's running a grassroots campaign and having, you know, what the cost of a mailer is within a very large district,
Thirty seconds.
it inhibits your ability to say, golly, I, I think I'd like to run for county council here. So by reducing the, the district sizes by about 30%, which is what this initiative is doing, and I have signed that petition, as I have my family, and I am also collecting signatures for it when I'm able. I think it's going to be an all-around good thing for the taxpayers and for, you know, everyone.
The next question is, how
You want me to?
Also, I'm sorry, Mr. Young. It's the second time I've done that to you. I apologize.
No, no, the first was with Danielle. You'll get Paul next.
Okay.
No worries. I, I just, I support the expansion of the council. It's, I think it's time. As Paul pointed out too, we, we've grown exponentially. We have, we're next to Baltimore City that has less population than us, but double the council members for the same reasons. One, our, our council doesn't represent the demographics that currently make up Baltimore County. And I believe it should, it sticks with my values, and I believe it sticks with the values of the other candidates that are running for District One. And I think that expanding the council would address those issues. Also, I, I think we're, I think we're in agreement here, but we're just completely fine. We, we, it makes them smaller, it makes it more accessible for constituents to then work with us, more manageable, and provides more opportunity to engage with colleagues at, at the local level to solve problems and bringing in, bringing in their experience, bringing in new blood and more opportunities is what a healthy jurisdiction, a healthy city, a healthy county, a healthy work, that, that's what we need. And I think that expanding the council does that. In terms of like four or two, I, I think four makes sense. I think two makes sense. And obviously, no matter what, if the petitions are, are successful, the county's going to move forward. It's unfortunate they had to move in that direction and not deciding for themselves. I will say that regardless, accepting the petitions
Thirty seconds.
or accepting the petition, if it's successful, and if not, not successful committing, working as a councilman, working with my colleagues on the council, to expanding, expanding to two or four, and including the community in that process and making a decision for either the next election or the next, I, I would think the next election makes more sense. But, so there you go.
Thanks. How would you increase, the next question is, how would you increase the availability of affordable housing for county residents? And Pat, Mr. Young, you go first. You go first this time.
No worries, no worries. One, as has been pointing out, as pointed out, as the councilman, you have unprecedented power over so many issues. I think, one, we're under a consent decree. We have requirements that we need to meet as a community, as a county, to make sure that we're providing affordable housing. And not just affordable housing, but workforce housing. And unfortunately, I think that when we start talking about this, anecdotal talking points get in the way of reality. And that's that people should have the, people have the right and should have the ability to live nearby where they work, choose where they want to live, and have options within certain school districts, send their kids where they want to send them to school. And unfortunately, that's not the reality for many families and many working folks in Baltimore County. I think using the power of the, of any individual council, we've also the power of the collective council itself to work on a strategic plan to, to increase our, our affordable housing options across the entire county. So it's not just one jurisdiction. Unfortunately, I think what tends to happen is folks tend to try and put in affordable housing where they think they can get away with it versus a strategic plan associated with meeting the need for everyone across all jurisdictions, from the east side all the way down to the southwest side. And I think part of that takes leadership and the ability to engage with your community, engage with the folks that would be impacted, and let them know that this isn't
Thirty seconds.
this isn't about talking points, it's about real life. It's about working mothers, it's about families, it's about veterans coming back and looking for the opportunity to, one, get their education while, you know, receiving very small amounts of money to go to school, whether it's on the GI Bill or working part-time. This is about affecting your neighbor and making Baltimore County a place that people want to live and providing options so that people know that they have a place to live, that they want to be here. Thank you.
Mr. Dungara?
So I had the privilege of growing up in a mixed-income community, and I can tell you that I would not be sitting here today if I didn't. It was a very powerful experience for me, where, you know, and my family going to college was not a, a, a story that we told around the table. And by growing up in communities like that, like I did in a mixed-income community, it allowed me to hear possibilities for my life that I would not have had if I didn't live there. Affordable housing is an incredibly complicated issue. It's something that I've been spending a lot of time learning about through participating in webinars, reading things, papers, podcasts. And one of the most important tools that we have is to kind of release what is called incremental development and to start, you know, slowly developing smaller projects through things like accessory dwelling units. We certainly need to look at things like form-based zoning reform, and not only form-based zoning reform that would allow different types of, you know, homes, a duplex or a fourplex in a community that's currently zoned just for single-family homes, but then to take it one step farther and start looking at things like pre-approved plans. I just participated in a webinar just the other day about how if we could pre, you know, pre-approved
Thirty seconds.
development, you're talking about saving about $40,000 in construction costs approximately per unit and saving six to nine months in permitting and kind of the development time. That's a huge advantage, but we certainly need to make sure that we elect someone that does not take money from the development lobby, because when developers come to the councilperson and say, can you change the zoning of this from X to 18X, we need to be asking for set-aside portions of affordable housing over a spectrum of income levels to create mixed-income communities.
Ms. Singley? So first, I want to say affordable housing is one of those terms that is loaded. It tends to have a connotation to it. So I want to say that I, again, I think we need to kind of reimagine and expand what we think of in terms of affordable housing. And me having worked and haven't worked for many years in aging services, I have the pleasure of being able to see how great affordable housing can be. Older adults, you know, living in Catholic Charities buildings and Wyonberg communities and so forth, you would never know that those were affordable housing buildings. They are managed so well. You know, they provide great services to the people that live there. And, and, and I think that they could be a model, quite frankly, for other management companies that want to get into the business of affordable housing. I also think, again, like what Mr. Dungara said, the zoning laws really do need to be updated so that you do have more options for people who cannot afford to live in a single-family home, but would like to live with other adults. And, and that, and it doesn't trigger, say, that it's, you know, it doesn't trigger an assisted living attachment to it because they're older adults all living under one, one umbrella that have, you know, maybe some assistance with ADL needs and so forth. I think that we need to really modernize in terms of who our communities are and what types of housing options people need. Another thing that I think we need to consider are co-ops. Co-ops are a great opportunity. They, they put the power
Thirty seconds.
of the members, the people who join those co-ops and live in apartments. Older adults have those options. There's a co-op in Randalls Town, there's a co-op in Essex. They can vote on their own, you know, rent, that, you know, they can vote on many different options within their community. I think a co-op would be a, a great example and another option to add to affordable housing. And I think that those, that, that, that arsenal of options would be how you would be able to, you know, oblige to the requirement to increase affordable housing by 2027.
This will be the last question. Just violence prevention, what about those already involved in the justice system? How will you, how will you assist returning people to the community with employment opportunities? Mr. Dungara, you want to go first?
I'll go first, yes. So, you know, I've had the privilege of, you know, being self-employed and, and hiring people that have come out of, you know, an incarcerated situation. It's, 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 it's very difficult for them. It's difficult to find employers that that will trust them, that will take the chance on them. And I do think that the county does need to take more of a lead role in doing that. Sometimes even it's because of substance abuse issues. You know, I, I hired a young man one time that he came out of jail because he had gone off his meds and he went to jail because there was no room in a psychiatric hospital. It's very important for leaders to find opportunities to support this very, very important issue. And it's one of the reasons why in my campaign, we've been working with an organization, actually a Howard County-based organization, to help plant trees in underserved areas that is totally free for the, you know, the, the homeowners and the communities. But best of all, the people that plant the tree are gentlemen who are transitioning out of, you know, incarceration, incarceration and learning environmental skills to improve the society. So I think that there's many, many opportunities for win-win situations that we can not only
Thirty seconds.
address this issue, but use it as an opportunity to do environmental restoration, to help people age in place, to help improve the viability of our older communities and increase community confidence through job training and things like that to help people maintain their properties as they, you know, grow older. So it's a great question.
Ms. Singley?
So prison reform is one of my passions. I think it is incredibly important that when we talk about police reform, we also include prison reform, which would include those wraparound services for that when people are incarcerated, they're getting what they need so they can return to society, which includes employment. So first of all, that I wanted to put that out there. The second thing though is, I think that a lot of times what happens is that stigma. There are laws and things put in place to where people cannot find jobs because of the way the job description is written. They ask questions on, you know, that, that will kind of, that, that, that cancel people out, that disqualify people from really good jobs. And what that does is, is it violates their civil rights. And me having volunteered for a civil rights organization, you'll never hear me co-sign that at all. I mean, I think if someone has served their time in prison and the judge has not included a probationary period that include, you know, that, that excludes them from certain employment, when someone returns to society, they need to be able to apply for positions. If a person is unable to work in certain professions, then that needs to be included on the, on whatever the job, that, that, whatever the judge says, you know, when, when someone is released from prison. And I don't think it's up to the county council or the county executive or anyone else to kind of place those parameters over someone who is being released from prison. I do believe also though, with that being said,
Thirty seconds.
you know, that if someone has certain offenses, you know, and, and, and that probationary period is extended to their employment, then we do have a right as employers to make sure that our vulnerable populations and so forth are protected. But that is what I mean when I say it's important that we have prison reform and judicial reform so that people actually have opportunities to, to realistically gain employment when they return to society and that we're not, employers are not sitting up here trying to decide whether or not someone should work or not.
Mr. Young?
So I, I like that Danielle presented a balanced approach, recognizing the, one, the intricacies and challenges associated with recidivism and folks getting out of the justice system and going back in. I've been proud while I've been a member of the General Assembly to reduce some of those antiquated barriers that have been put into place by employers. When, when someone goes through the justice system and they've been incarcerated and coming out and they're qualified for a position, as long as it's not a violent crime, as long as it's not a, a heinous crime, if they've served their time, there's no necessary, there's no need to include on the application whether they were in jail or arrested at some point in time. These, these little things that are put into place by some employers, not all, have served as a detriment to providing employment to folks that have been in the justice system. I, I like to think, I mean, I grew up in a, I grew up in a time, and, and I believe that America still is a place that provides redemption. When you've served your time, you've committed a crime, you've been arrested, you've gone through the justice system, and you're out, we shouldn't be continuing to punish someone. And we should be providing opportunities so those folks can be contributing members of, of society. I'll say that what we've also done, and as a member of the Health and Subcommittee Subcommittee, focusing on mental health and justice reinvestment, so that, one, preventing them from going, preventing
Thirty seconds.
from going into the justice system in the first place, where what they need is treatment. They don't need They don't need to be arrested. They don't need to be penalized or thrown into jail. Unfortunately, as Paul mentioned, some folks will choose to go through the justice system because they don't want to wait to find a bed, or there isn't a bed available, which means that their unprecedented or unrecorded time served can't be provided with treatment. So in terms of the question, I would, one, continue to work, and we've done it in the state legislature, in supporting mental health and preventing folks from getting in the justice system in the first place when not needed, and continue to break down barriers related to employment for folks that have served their time, served their life.
We're out of time for the formal question-and-answer period portion of the program, and now we will move to the candidates' closing statements. Mr. Young will go first, then Mr. Dungara, and then Ms. Singley.
So, one, thank you for, again, holding this and giving us opportunity to engage with our constituents and engaging with you, too. The work to do is important. You've been, one, not only you, but the organization's been doing your work for a very long time, and it's important to provide everyone an opportunity to engage with the process. And that's what I'm excited about for being the councilman for District One, providing everyone an opportunity to engage in a process that I think some, at least from my experience and from my communication with folks, doors, canvassing, they feel very disconnected. And I believe that's the role of your councilperson. You're supposed to be, as their councilperson, your elected representative, whether it's in Annapolis or in Towson, you're the advocate. You are the representative for them on the official legislative body for their communities. It's up to us, all of us, to make sure that we're engaging ourselves and engaging our neighbors and engaging folks with the process, making sure that they have a door to enter, that they don't feel that it's a separate, it's a separate process or it's something that's removed from them. This is a, we do best collectively when we're all working together and we're all communicating. And from what I've heard, there are folks that have a lot of hope for this area. They've grown up here. They've gone away for school or maybe even for a job, but they've all come back here because they love this place. They love the southwest side of Baltimore County. They love Baltimore County and Baltimore region. And while we have unprecedented challenges, I can say over the last eight years, even beyond that, there hasn't been
Thirty seconds.
...anything we haven't been able to address, haven't been able to work through, and still working on, when we've worked together on it. I look forward to putting that mindset to work for the folks at District One, looking forward to representing my home, and want to hope, if I, one, I hope I've earned your vote, and two, if not, I hope to seize your door sooner rather than later before July 19th. So, thank you, everybody.
Mr. Dungara?
So, you know, I'm in this race because I'm concerned about the county's direction and that our efforts to address our problems are going to be hindered because politicians have chosen to grow an unsustainable tax base that's been steered by a powerful pay-to-play system in the county. I have a consistent record of fighting for us and for positive change in this regard. Over the district, we're seeing neighborhood and school violence, crumbling, dangerous and congested streets, flooding, sewage backups, abandoned homes, a development of open spaces while older communities face accelerated decline and decreasing confidence, having teachers leaving the profession by the droves, and an affordable housing crisis and rising poverty rates. And I can tell everybody that I've knocked on thousands of doors in this district, and everybody's concerned. But I'm going to agree with Pat, and I also hear that there's so much potential here. And I'm running to help us connect these dots, identifying the historical causes of these problems, and helping to address them by being intentional with our strategies while we leverage our opportunities. Tonight, I'm asking you to join my labor, this neighbor-led effort and stand up to build stronger, sustainable, and equitable communities for all of us. This race in reality is about land use, and it's about who to trust with the power to turn dirt into gold. And that's something that everyone needs to take very seriously. It's about who will use
Thirty seconds.
...the power to steer it in a transparent and equitable fashion to create a sustainable tax base that's capable of building successful communities that grow more prosperous with every passing generation. And that's what I want to do, and it's why I'm running to be your councilperson. And I hope that you'll consider voting for Paul Dungara on July the 19th. Thank you.
Ms. Singley? Well, it was a pleasure speaking with all of you tonight. I appreciate the NAACP and League of Women Voters, Paul and Pat, for joining me tonight. I would be remiss if I don't mention that we are clearly living in unprecedented times, a lot of different hot-button issues, challenges to our civil rights are happening from the federal, local, and state level throughout the country, specifically also here in Maryland. I'm in front of the League of Women Voters. There's a real chance we won't have a woman on the county council. I mean, there's not that many of us running, and there is no incumbent. Every issue we talked about tonight pretty much is dealing with human services. And I have experience working in human services. These are complex issues. These are not issues that can be resolved with one wave of a wand or just throwing money at. It takes innovation. It takes proximity, people who understand the population and the systems internally and the issues, the complex issues that bring us here, the history of this country, the history of our communities here in Baltimore County, not being afraid to talk specifically about systemic racism and other issues that, quite frankly, have impacted and left our communities in this ill state. And I know that, you know, people are saying that we're optimistic as we should be, but we also have to be real, and we have to not be afraid to talk about issues. And quite frankly, there aren't a lot of people that are
Thirty seconds.
...hard topics. We have to. We have to deal with things directly. We have to address sexism. We have to address issues of systemic racism and everything that's plaguing our community, not just land use, not just throwing money at issues and problems, but really rolling our sleeves up with some new ideas and tackling those problems head-on. And if that's what you want as a councilperson, I'm your woman. Please vote for me July 19th. Thank you.
Thank you, audience members, for your questions and participating in tonight's forum, and thank you to our candidates for participating in the forum and serving as an example of civic discourse. You've given Baltimore County residents a great deal to think about as we vote in July. I would like to thank our forum committee for arranging this event, and the League of Women Voters of Baltimore County, and the NAACP of Randalls Town for co-sponsoring this forum. In the next few days, recordings of this forum will be available on the League's website and on vote411.org. Primary election day is July 19th, 2022. Early voting begins on July 7, and all voting ends on July 19 at 9:00 p.m. Vote 411 is the League of Women Voters' free online voter's guide, your one-stop shopping site for everything about your local ballot, candidate positions in their own words, polling places, and more. Hard copies of the League of Women Voters' guides will be available soon at branches of the Baltimore County Public Library, senior centers, Ed Start Centers, and college campuses. We hope that you will consider joining or donating to the League of Women Voters of Baltimore County and the Randalls Town NAACP to support our work. Thanks for coming, and good night.